The mic's up loud this evening. And welcome to Beaver Creek's regular scheduled city council meeting. And before we get to the agenda tonight, we have some proclamations we'd like to make and a special presentation. So to start off, I'm going to ask Chief Fiori to join me. Captain Lenze, you're going to join me, please. And our honoree dispatcher, Ashley Marshall. Ashley, thanks for joining us tonight. Well, we do this once a year, but we should do it more often to express our appreciation. You know, you talk about first responders and the first thing that goes to our mind are the police and the fire. But who do you get when you call 911? You get a dispatcher. They are truly the first responders. So tonight, I'm going to read a proclamation for the first responders in our jurisdiction. You ready?
Ready.
Whereas communication operators are not as visible as the men and women who arrive at the scene of emergencies, but provide a vital link to public safety services as part of the first responder team. And whereas, often called the unsung heroes of public safety, are the first responders, since they are usually the first to receive requests for emergency services from the public and play an important role in the successful delivery Uh-oh. ...of the successful delivery of public safety services to those in need and are the single vital link for our police and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio and providing them with information and ensuring their safety. And whereas, the communication operators of Beaver Creek's Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each communication operator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, along with the entire city council, and I will add on behalf of a grateful community as well, do hereby declare National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 10th through April 16th. So I would like to present that to you, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, gosh, okay.
Surprise.
Thanks for the heads up. It's just on behalf of all the dispatchers, it's an honor to serve our community in Beaver Creek, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Chief, you want to add anything to that?
Folks, these are the people that when you call in in that panic, that excited state, when that critical incident is happening, that they're talking to you. They are talking to the officer on the street, they are possibly getting other 911 calls coming in, they're talking to the fire dispatch, they're doing all these things at one time while remaining professional with composure, and they do a great job at it. And I've told them many a times, I just don't know how you do it, because I could not sit in there for eight to 10 hours doing that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Captain, anything to add?
I also just want to express my appreciation for the hard work that they do and the commitment they have to the department and the city. And as their supervisor over that division, they make my job easy, how they just come in and they do their job and they stay focused in their commitment to the city. So I appreciate everything that they do also.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, I'd like to turn the mic over to Councilmember Adams here, and he's got a special presentation.
I wanted to congratulate the dispatchers as well. You do a great job. I agree with the chief, I wouldn't want to do what you do. Eric, if you could come up here, please. Last year, we started a program, this young man put it together with his company called Lemonade Day, and we really had a great participation out here in Beaver Creek, and they're going to start doing it again this year. And it's been opened up to a lot more cities. I think there were only three cities involved in it last year. And Beaver Creek had the most lemonade stands, which we're really proud of and hope to do more of that. But that's coming up in June, and I'd like to read a proclamation for that. Says, whereas the youth of Beaver Creek are the future, and it is vital to provide them with the educational opportunities necessary to achieve their full potential. And whereas, one such opportunity is Lemonade Day, a national program offering youth the chance to learn and apply entrepreneurial thinking through the act of building and managing a lemonade stand. And whereas, by inspiring youth with the spirit of enterprise and teaching them basic business and entrepreneurial skills, we can help them become successful contributing members to the community. And whereas, since Lemonade Day began in 2007, over 1 million kids have participated, and it has grown into a national entrepreneurial program to teach youth how to start, own, and operate their own businesses through the act of building, running a lemonade stand, and by following the spend, save, and share philosophy. Youth learn to set goals, develop a business plan, establish the budget, seek investors, provide customer service, and give back to their community. And whereas, participation in Lemonade Day demonstrates to young people in Beaver Creek that they can meaningfully contribute to the prosperous future for themselves and their families, and they can achieve things if they simply set their mind and energy toward accomplishing that. And whereas, the city of Beaver Creek commends River Valley Credit Union, organizers, volunteers, and participants in Lemonade Day, and extends best wishes for a successful and rewarding experience. And now therefore, on behalf of the mayor and the city council, I, Don Adams, do hereby recognize June 8th, 2022, as Lemonade Day in Beaver Creek. Normally, we'd have Eric speak now, but he's a scheduled speaker, so we'll have him come back up later.
We have one very special presentation today, and I would like to ask the chief. Thank you. See, somebody does remind me. Chief, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. It's good to be here this evening. It seems like we've been in a season here, the last 18 months of retirements and hiring. This evening, I'd like to introduce to you Officer Jason Mallett. He is a new officer here at the city of Beaver Creek. Mayor Stone administered the office to Officer Mallett earlier this morning. And he is a 2017 graduate of Beaver Creek High School, graduated from Wright State University in 2021, with a bachelor's degree in athletic training. He's also obtained an EMT certification in 2021 from Clark State University. Jason was hired initially as a police recruit in September of 2021, successfully completed the Green County Career Center Criminal Justice Academy, graduating on March 18th of 2022. He's had his first official day today. He's assigned to a field training officer, probably will have about 12 weeks or so of training, and we are looking forward to it all around here with this young man. So I'd like to introduce to you Officer Mallett.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve the community that I grew up in. I look forward to being here for hopefully a long and healthy career and getting to see how I can help the community and serve alongside a bunch of well-meaning individuals. Thank you, guys.
Well, Jason, thank you very much. Go ahead and give him a round. You have a fine group of officers you're going to be working with, so it'll be, I think it'll be fun as well as educational, and we welcome you. I do want to say we have one, two little things in common. One is we're both Beaver Creek High School grads. The other is that both years that we graduated end in seven. That's all I'm going to say. So, welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if we have a call to order, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz. Vice Mayor Garcia. Mayor Stone.
Here. Do I have a motion?
Motion to excuse Vice Mayor Garcia and Councilwoman Schwartz.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Vice Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Schwartz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I would like to turn this over to Councilmember Bales for the pledge.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a quick prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we ask your blessings on our council who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Help us not ask first, how do we fix this, but what do we do to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Please grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. May we speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently when it's time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. In your name, amen.
Amen. All right, we have an agenda before us. Are there any changes?
Move we approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have one set of minutes to approve, and that's for March 28th, the regular session, regular scheduled meeting. Any changes?
Move we approve the minutes of the March 28th regular session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the March 28th minutes, as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion, abstentions. Everybody must have been here. Thank you. All right, we do have a pre-scheduled speaker this evening, and that is Mr. Eric Gagliano?
Gagliano.
Gagliano, all right. And you saw him a minute ago for Lemonade Days. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having me. Before I say anything, I'd like to thank you guys so much for your participation last year. Beaver Creek truly is the model for how lemonade, how cities support Lemonade Day. And I think you showed, when a city supports an event like this, an educational event like this, how much the community gets behind it. By far, you had so many more kids get involved and learn entrepreneurship because of your leadership, so thank you very much. So once again, this year, River Valley Credit Union is bringing Lemonade Day to Beaver Creek. Lemonade Day will be June 18th. It's a Saturday. Like last year, children from all over the Miami Valley can register for Lemonade Day, follow the lessons, which take several hours, guided by either their parents, or a teacher, or scout leader, or any kind of mentor. They learn how to plan and build and run their own business in the form of a lemonade stand. This year, we're doing something a little bit unique. In addition to the June 18th Lemonade Day event, we're having a separate event the week before, on June 11th. It's going to be right here at Laffino Park, hosting lemonade stands from all over the Miami Valley, from Huber Heights all the way down to Middletown, all the way up to Xenia. Where we're going to, children will have an opportunity to test drive their stand, test drive their business models. And this is put on by Lee's Famous Recipe. It's a best-of award event, and there are seven awards that'll be handed out, for anything from best tasting, to best themed, to best business plan, best service. So we're going to invite kids not only to register, to learn the lessons, to put the stand up on the 18th, but also to come out to Laffino Park on the 11th and have a chance to win an Oculus 2 as an award. We're having, again, like I said, seven Oculus 2s handed out by Lee's Famous Recipe at this event. So again, thank you very much. The parents, the teachers, the mentors can go to rivervalleycu.org to register their children, and then they can register, invite as many children as they'd like to mentor through the program. And we're very excited. Thanks to you guys, we were able to make it significantly bigger this year, so thank you, Beaver Creek.
Well, very good. We enjoyed getting out and sampling a few stands ourselves last year, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
On the 18th, what time is the lemonade stands?
Lemonade, it's Lemonade Day quite literally. It is up to the child. They make their own business hours. So they, so it goes all day long. Now, there is, and thank you, I forgot, I should have mentioned this. Every child who participates in Lemonade Day can put their lemonade stand on a map, and it's on the National Lemonade Day website, so that anybody in the community who wants to go out and support these children and their businesses can go to that map and see where the children are. And it helps them to market their stands, it helps the community to find the children, you know, depending on how far they want to travel, find the closest one, go to all of them, like we did last year. So, yeah, it's a very well put together organization, Lemonade Day.
Excellent. And then on the 11th, at Laffino Park, is that event open to the public?
We are going to make it open to the public. We are going to, yes, invite the communities to come. It gives the children a second chance to make some money as well. Now, the tentative time for that is from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And I still need to work with the park district to organize all of the details on that, but we're targeting 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The children could come an hour or so in advance and put their stands up so that they're ready at 10:00 AM.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership. It was really exciting last year to have a privilege to go around and see these stands, and to begin to see the young people build a business model which was going to carry through with them entirely in their lives.
Yeah.
Very nice. Thank you.
Some of my favorite, this is probably the most rewarding day professionally that I've had.
Me.
And two quotes that stay with me from parents, and actually, they came both from Beaver Creek parents. One was that the mother said, "I never thought that I'd have my daughter, my little daughter, come to me and say, 'Mom, I need investors.'" And then another mom, because of the depth that these lessons go into, said that she was surprised, she didn't think that her child would get a master's degree in business from this, because they do get very, very in-depth. But it's all still built for an elementary school child, somebody who's from third to sixth grade ideally. That's what it's really made for.
Yeah, thank you for your encouragement of entrepreneurship and for passing along free-market principles to the next generation. It's hugely important, so thank you.
Thank you.
I do recommend, though, speaking from experience, if you go around and visit all of these lemonade stands, just drink a little bit of lemonade at each one, because after four or five with a full glass, that sugar rush hits, and it hits hard.
Well, there's some talented kids here in Beaver Creek. There was some really good lemonade last year.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. All right, next on the agenda is ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 22-14.
Ordinance 22-14, an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council amending Chapter 75 Traffic Code for Beaver Creek Codified Ordinances to adopt new Section 75.70, shared mobility devices, to make permanent ban on the use of shared mobility devices, including the placement or operation thereof in any public right-of-way or on public property, and offering the same for use anywhere in the city.
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening again. Our current traffic code, Chapter 75, the Beaver Creek Codified Ordinances, does not address the use of shared mobility devices. The adoption of this new Section 75.70 will make a permanent ban on the use of, placement of, and operation of these devices in any public right-of-way or public property in the city. Now, shared mobility devices are those dockless electric scooters and bicycles that are available to be rented on demand from unstaffed locations. These devices are frequently abandoned by users in streets, sidewalks, and other public places, creating visual clutter and serious safety concerns, especially for the most vulnerable pedestrians. The city of Beaver Creek now encompasses only nearly 28 square miles and does not have a continuous sidewalk system or a traditional downtown, which creates potentially serious safety concerns. The purpose of adding new Section 75.70 is to prohibit shared mobility devices from being placed in the public right-of-way or on public property, operated in the public right-of-way or on public property, or offered for use anywhere in the city. Staff is recommending adoption of this new Section 75.70, shared mobility devices to the city of Beaver Creek Traffic Code, to make a permanent ban on the use of shared mobility devices.
All right, thanks, Chief. I think Mr. McHugh might have a comment or two.
Yes, Mayor and council. Initially, I just want to point out that this did start originally with the traditional idea of the scooters, but in looking at the issue, we thought it appropriate to also address the electric bike or e-bikes, and also the non-powered bikes also, because all of them, in theory, can fit the same business model, and these are business, you know, it is for commercial purposes. The other thing is that, Mr. Burkett came up, raised a question, I think it's a valid question, and, which was, could there be a subscription service, something of that nature, which would be slightly different than what was the traditional model that you see right now? So C4, if you look at the section C4, you'll see earlier drafts of this, that was not in there, but that is intended to address that particular concern. So, the idea that someone could join a club and have access to these versus, you know, not really being a member of anything other than, you know, having it on your phone, the website on your phone, the app. So, a slight change from, but again, an effort to try to cover every aspect of this, as council wished.
Sure. All right, thank you. Anything you want to add, Chief?
No, Your Honor.
All right, we'll get to some questions here in a minute, but this is the first reading of an ordinance, so it is a, it is a public hearing portion. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will close the public input. Anyone up here have any questions? Just jump in.
I do, for Chief, oh, sorry. And we've talked about this at a work session, but I simply just want to ask the question for the benefit of those watching at home, the benefit of those in the audience.
Yes.
With three young kids, some of whom have, you know, their own mobility devices, this has no impact on a personal mobility device. Any kid that wants one can privately own it, use it, et cetera.
That is correct. These are just for those shared mobility devices. As I explained, the higher bias code pretty much spells that out. Those are the ones that are rented. They're usually like from an app or something of that nature. And the higher bias code gives us the authority to either allow them, regulate them, or prohibit them. So it does not affect those that are personally owned.
Thank you.
Mr. McHugh, would this prohibit, you know, we've got a new bike shop being built right now, would this prohibit them from renting a bike?
No, I don't think it would prevent them from renting it. We did have a little discussion of that, possibly also doing test rides, which I would expect, if you're going to buy a bicycle, that you could, I mean, their new location will be very appropriate to let somebody take a little ride on the bike to see if they want to purchase it, so, no, it's not intended for that. I mean, they're not going to be operating a website of that nature. I don't, I don't foresee that as a situation.
I guess just as, you know, kind of a bike hub of the Midwest, we have a lot of people that come here, and they wanted to rent a bike for the weekend, you know, return it. It's not quite similar to just shared mobility.
Yeah, the difference, though, is that these are, these are intended, you rent them, you use it, you go somewhere, you leave it. And that's really part of, part of the problem with this type situation, is that when they're left, they're just left.
Well, I guess that's what I wanted to make clear, is that if they rent it from one place and they return it back to that place, that we've got no issues.
That is not intended at all.
Got it.
Anyone else? All right, do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'd move to second reading, 22-14. Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 22-14 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is decision items, and Chief, you just did not get very far away, did you? You, on the spot again.
Do you need to read, or am I ready? Okay. Okay. Oh, me? Okay. Make sure I wasn't doing this on that order. This is a liquor permit, it's for a new permit for Mr. Burrito LLC, doing business as Hot Head Burritos, located at 3800 Colonel Glenn Highway. The High Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control sent us notification of this request regarding a new D1 liquor permit for Mr. Burrito, doing business as Hot Head Burritos there on Colonel Glenn. The records checked required by the High Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control were conducted on the applicant and shareholders for this application and request. There were no concerns whatsoever, and staff is recommending this application request move forward without any further comment.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Most to accept without comment.
Second. I have a motion and a second on this table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't get too far away, Chief, you never know. All right, next on the agenda is council time. Councilmember Kern, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few comments. First of all, to congratulate Ashley Marshall, representing the first responders tonight. I think it was really great to represent that particular function, and also the importance of that week. Also, I'd like to also congratulate our new officer, Jason Mallett. Welcome to the Beaver Creek City Police. Think he'll really do an excellent job for us. Attended the mayor's first Thursday event here over at Wandering Griffin, which was really kind of neat. We had three mayors there, I think you indicated, Your Honor. And attended that event, plus a multitude of other people. Also, had the honor to go over with Councilmember Adams and also Vice Mayor Garcia to the Boy Scout troop at St. Luke's, and really had an opportunity to answer a lot of questions concerning council and what it means to be a council member, working on all the challenges that we have. It was really a neat evening, and was glad to participate in that. Also, at Rotary, we heard from our county engineer. She was able to, again, elaborate on a variety of things. Councilmember Bales brought her to the front and identified some of her background, and then she proceeded to tell us about a lot of her challenges. So, a lot of neat things going on in the engineer's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales. Yes, surprised you.
You did surprise me. Yeah. Okay, well, first, I would like to also welcome Jason Mallett to the police department. It's nice to see a hometown individual join the force and continue his career in Beaver Creek. I'd also like to congratulate the Green Bucks, who gave away three new trikes a week or so ago to some really worthy and amazing families in our community. I'd also like to give a short Owens Place update. They have a new amenity coming to Owens Place. It is a new swing that will accommodate people in wheelchairs, and I'd like to give a big thanks to the Laffino family for making a contribution that really funded that project. So, really nice, and I think that that amenity will, it's ordered, and hopefully by mid to late summer, we'll see some additional amenity there. I'd also like to take a minute to invite anyone interested to the Family Violence Prevention Center of Green County Annual Spring Fling. That is on April 29th at the Green County Fairgrounds. And for those of you who are interested in that event, you can sign up at violencefreefutures.org. This coming week is National Work Zone Awareness Week, and so April 11th through the 15th, you'll see a lot of counties and city employees wearing brightly colored shirts out in work zones, and it's this time of year when we start to see a lot of our street activities take place, so please be aware of those folks who are working on our behalf in the community. Late last week, I was sent the annual water and sewer rate survey from the city of Pickwa, who does a survey of about 30 or so communities who offer water and sewer in their jurisdiction. And I thought it was very interesting to see where Beaver Creek stood in that list. Quite frankly, right about in the middle. The, these are based on 22,500 gallons or 3,000 cubic feet of water in a three-month period. The average, the average rate The average, the average rate for that quantity is $309, and Beaver Creek is 302, so slightly below average combined water and sewer rate. For your information, the low rate was in Union at 179, and the high rate was in Yellow Springs at 585. So, happy to have good Green County water in Beaver Creek, and they're doing a nice Let's see, on Saturday morning, my family and I attended the Lions Club Pancake Breakfast. The Lions Club does great work in the community. It was at the VFW on Dayton-Zenia Road, and I just wanted to thank them for putting on that breakfast, and it was delicious, and we all left very full. Finally, I'll say that Friday is tax filing day, and probably like 99% of you, nobody really likes paying their taxes, including me, but we do have an important initiative that we need to consider coming up on May 3rd. I really have enjoyed talking to the public, listening to their concerns and their interest in the issue, and I've been reading a lot online, which is interesting. I'll say that because there is a ton of misinformation out online, and of course, that's going to happen, but I really wanted to say, I encourage those who want to learn more about our income tax initiative to please get the facts, understand the facts, and make the decision based on the facts, one way or the other. I, I can certainly respect that. We have information on our city website. I believe the city manager's got a slide, he's going to be talking about that. And really, for me, personally, my family and I will be paying more if the income tax passes, but I believe the value in which that will provide our community. And I think it really boils down to pride. Of course, affordability is something to consider, but, you know, I really want to keep Beaver Creek amazing, and so for me, it's a no-brainer. I'm voting yes. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. In my other position, I was in New York for the past week, and we got stranded, so I was there a little longer. So, there were some events I wanted to attend, and I apologize for not making it, but I want to say thank you to my fellow council members for attending some of those really valuable times in the community. Being away, I actually got to participate on behalf of the city in a webinar. The Council for Foreign Relations puts on a webinar for state and local officials on energy that I got to attend on Tuesday, the 5th. So, some good information, I think, to be taken from that discussion, and, you know, should energy prices continue to change, some good points of input. As Councilmember Bales mentioned, the 11th to the 15th, National Work Zone Awareness. Wednesday is Wear Orange for Safety Day, so an important one, and as you mentioned, it's orange barrel season, so to take care of those that are working so hard on our behalf to improve our infrastructure. And finally, I too would like to welcome Officer Millet to the Beaver Creek Police Forces. Wonderful to have a high school graduate then want to serve the home community, so a big welcome to him, and a big thank you to his family as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An appreciation and observance of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, I'd like to really commend our dispatchers. We've got a very dedicated group of young ladies over there that really do a great job. They're actually the unseen heroes of public service and first responders. People don't see them, they hear them when they call. As I said earlier, I don't know that I could do that job. I've heard some of the things that they deal with, and I don't know that I could do that. And I really respect the job that they do. I was able to attend the Green Cats Monthly Board Meeting and learn of some of the changes that they're making to their schedules, because the ridership is still not back to pre-COVID levels, and as with everybody else, and I know we struggle with the same thing here at the city, is they have a problem getting drivers. I also attended the mayor's first Thursday, or actually 5th Thursday. It was, a lot of great contacts were made, and Wandering Griffin did a great job hosting it. I definitely really enjoyed that one. I was able to help out at the mall with Green Bucks and a sensory bunny for disabled children, and then followed that up with the Green Bucks Visibility Day, where we gave out three bikes. We have a list, I don't know how long the list is, probably 100 of bikes that are on, waiting to come in, because of supply, excuse me, supply chain issues. We can't give those out. We're hoping in May, at the blessing of the bikes out of Kill Care, we'll be able to give out some more of those. As Councilman Kern said, Vice Mayor Garcia and I, and he attended the Boy Scout Troop 85, and they'd asked us to come in and talk about the rights and responsibilities of being U.S. citizens, and they had some really good questions, so apparently they're doing some really great training over there. And as a result of that, I went to their pancake breakfast this past Sunday. They did a great job over there at St. Luke's. I attended the Beaver Creek Police Department's annual meeting, and I'd like to congratulate the annual winners that they had there, the COPP of the Year, Keith Simpson, Civilian of the Year, Dispatcher Libby Chapman, and Police Officer of the Year, Officer Frank I had the opportunity to attend the First Crime Prevention Academy, hosted by the Miami Valley Crime Prevention Association, and sponsored by the Beaver Creek Police Department. It's a great opportunity to understand how we can help the police with crime prevention and just making them aware of things that are, that we see. As the old saying goes, you see something, say something. Nine times out of 10, if you go vis, as I, I've worked with the police, and they go and talk to people that have complaints, and they say, oh yeah, they were doing this a week ago or so, but we just didn't say anything. So if you see something, say something. They would much rather go and not have anything there than have to come back and really deal with a real problem. Also was able to attend an Easter egg hunt held by Therapy Connections out at Owens Place this past Sunday. It was, excuse me, it was on Saturday. The weather really cooperated. We had rain, we had whiteout snow, we had rain again, but there was a period of time for about 45 minutes that it cleared up, and we got the Easter egg hunt in. So, that's for disabled kids and their families. It was really a great opportunity to be there. This morning, I had the privilege of being here for the swearing-in of our newest police officer, Officer Jason Millet. And with this being his first day, now I thought I would let you know some of employee anniversaries here at the city of Beaver Creek. You've got Mark Schelker, engineering, with three years. John Bondi, the police department, 15 years. Rachel Smith, golf, one year. Ryan Profit, golf, six years. Taylor Ulrich, golf, four years. Barry Weiskopf, who's also a dare officer, police, 14 years. Shawna Tibbs, Sergeant, with Parks, three years. Avery Blanton with golf, nine years. Kaitlin Baker with police, one year. Tom Beck, public service, 13 years. Steve Click, golf, 18 years. Jorge Quadro, golf, 10 years. Sean McGrath, golf, one year. Cassandra Minnick, golf, six years. Matthew Knight, golf, two years. Chris Gerhart, public service, 18 years. Riley Myers, golf, three years. And Charles LaMaster, golf, five years. We want to thank all of our employees for the longevity and the time that they give us here in Beaver Creek. We certainly appreciate their, their service. And that's all I have, sir.
Very good. Well, it's, COVID winding down as much as it has, everybody's busy going to different events, and people are wanting to get out. They get out everywhere. Every, every place I go, the crowds are bigger than they were the year before, you know, over the last few years, so it's, it's a lot of fun in that respect. I've had the pleasure this past week of playing the very mature mayor role, and the other end of the mayor role, the very immature, by going with Pete to Washington to represent Beaver Creek at the DDC fly-in, and meeting with our legislators and others in DC, which was very interesting. In some cases, a little scary, as you well know. But then I also have what's the most, some of the things are the most fun. I got, I was visiting a second grade class at Valley School. About a month ago, the kids wrote me letters, and, and so I made arrangements to go to the class, and then, to my surprise, they wrote another set of letters. But it is, you know, it's our future, and when the kids get excited about local government, it's, you know, it thrills me, it really does, and so I really enjoy it. I miss our Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts that we host here, and let them act as council members, but that'll come back as well. You know, we have a very important issue on the May 5th ballot, and now I got to get serious again. I held five coffees throughout Beaver Creek over the last few weeks, just to be available to try to answer questions. We had some good questions. I believe we had some people that, that got the answers that they needed. But I encourage all of you, just like Councilmember Bales did, if you have questions, our numbers are all on the website, personal numbers. You're welcome to call us, you're welcome to call staff, you're welcome to go to the website, or you're welcome to go to Brian Jarvis's Fair Funding Committee's webpage as well. But please, I just encourage you to get the, get the answer. Don't rely on social media as your only source. That said, I think I just want to reiterate that it, Beaver Creek is at a, at a point where we're not at a growth point so much anymore. We've done the growth. We're at the point of no return when it comes to maintaining what we have, and I'm talking about infrastructure. Everything that's been built, and a lot of it was paid for by the developers, and not by the city, and those things now are getting old, and they need concrete replaced, they need curbs replaced, they need sidewalks replaced. We are way understaffed in our police force. We are way understaffed at our road department. So I urge you to educate yourself well, and as Councilmember Bales said, yea, nay, as long as you know the right answer for you, that's what we really care about. So, with that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say, want, piggyback on one thing you said, correct that we aren't growing housing-wise, we're growing slightly in housing, some buildings that are happening, the MI Homes Two Developments that are the first approved planned developments since 2004, '05. So we haven't added housing too much in the city throughout the years, but we have commercially grown 42% since 2002 in our number of employees that are here working in the city. I mentioned, if you recall, during the State of the City, that the known, and that's important known, because there's a lot that we don't know, but known growth employees to be added to the city this year and over the next couple were over 1,800 jobs coming to the city of Beaver Creek. And if you read the paper, Dayton Business Journal, all these places are talking about hundreds and hundreds of more jobs. One defense contractor in our backyard shall, was in the paper, I believe today, that potentially getting a, what was it, 183 something billion-dollar contract, which that would add jobs, absolutely. So we, while we may not be growing residentially, we are still growing commercially, and jobs are being added, which jobs being added is terrific. That is more traffic on our streets, that is more policing that needs to happen, that is more infrastructure that needs taken care of from all those that come into our city. So with that, I'll move on.
Just, just for clarity, we have a couple mayors in the room that will, that will say, growth is a relative term, but there was some massive growth some years back, and that's when Beaver Creek changed and became a full-fledged city in my mind. So it's just a matter of experience.
Oh, yeah.
Okay?
So, thank you. Definitely understand.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah. All right, so just a couple announcements tonight. This is exciting. Soar into spring if Mother Nature can make up her mind, right? They say Mother Nature's all for rocker this time of year, you know, snow, sunshine, snow again, who knows? Hopefully we got, I cut my grass Sunday, so let's claim that that's it, okay? So we'll soar into spring, April 23rd, that's our big kickoff. It's at 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. at Dominic Laffino Park. Join us as we celebrate soaring into spring and the return of warmer weather with games, inflatables, foods, information about all your favorite spring and summer activities. We thank the Green Optimist Club. We'll have to celebrate the National Kite Fly Month with free kites. Also, we think, always like to thank our sponsors. We have great partners that these park events would not happen without. Great sponsors, Day Air, Mosaic Church, Optimist, and Dean's Plumbing. Thank you for their sponsorship of this event. If you have any other additional questions, please call the Parks Department, 937-427-5514. Hope to see you at Dominic Laffino Park on April 23rd. This is a contest, the Arbor Day Tree Contest, that we've, we're having, this continues. The contest ends April 24th, and we hope on Arbor Day, the 29th, that the board will announce a winner. And what we're looking for, and the winner receives a gift card from Knollwood Garden Center. So what we're looking for is submissions for the largest tree in Beaver Creek. So you go, you take a picture, you send it to treeadvisoryboard@beavercreekohio.gov. You're trying to include the tree's location and the type, if you know it, but we're, what we're asking is that you measure the circumference at the, about the chest level height, and the tree must be in course within the city of Beaver Creek limits. Details of the event are posted on the city's Facebook page as well. But interesting to find, we hope we have some interesting pictures and some good competition for the largest tree in Beaver Creek. And I will say, add this, the city of Beaver Creek, for the third year, is a Tree City USA, so congratulations to our Parks Department for that. There are ceremonies coming soon that they'll be attending. As mentioned earlier, just wanted to bring this to light, a good informational page on the 1% income tax on the May 3rd ballot. Residents will have the chance to vote on that on May 3rd. The information of the proposed 1% income tax can be found on the city's website, so beavercreekohio.gov. You can do the forward slash and just put it in yourself, income tax. If you can't remember that, just beavercreekohio.gov, and you'll see a tab called Income Tax. You click there, and it will drive you to the page. That webpage does include key points about the income tax, a tax calculator, the city's tax code in its entirety, budget, links to the budgets, resolutions, capital improvement plan. It has every piece of legislation and everything you could need that are for the facts of it. Early voting is underway, so the, if you don't know where, you know, of course, it's in Green County, I believe off of Leadbetter, where the Green County voting is, but if you need to know where your voting poll is or anything like that, you can visit voteohio.gov and enter your name and location. I think it will help you find your poll on, to vote in person. Of course, any questions regarding that, that you may have, how it may impact you, a personal question, is this income included or not included, or, or whatever the case may be, please feel free to email us, incometax@beavercreekohio.gov, or you can call us at the 937-427-5511, and actually talk to our finance director, who will help find the answer. If he doesn't know it, we'll find you the answer. So I believe that is all I have tonight.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we have, the agenda says, citizen comment. So is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue whatsoever? Just help yourself, come up forward when you're ready. We would appreciate a name and an address and three minutes, or get time donated by up to two fellow citizens. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Jambrone, and I live at 1199 Picket Ridge Court in Beaver Creek, and I'm here tonight to share my support for the 1% income tax. And first and foremost, I want to thank you all for having the courage to place this issue on the ballot. It's not easy, and it doesn't always feel good when you're It's not easy, and it doesn't always feel good when your neighbors say, why would you want to raise our taxes? But I think people forget that you also live here, and that this is part of what we need to do to keep our city strong. I also wanted to thank you for the careful and very thoughtful manner in which you structured the measure, because if successful, every single resident in Beaver Creek would see its property tax reduction. In addition, the way that you structured this means that the 1% earned income tax would not be assessed against social security payments, pensions, retirement benefits, military pay, interest, dividends, capital gains, and many other categories. The measure also includes 100% credit for taxes paid to other cities. It shows that you listen to those who are concerned about how it would work, where the money would go, and how it would be offset, and how it would reduce property taxes. All of those things mattered, because those are things that we've heard from citizens when we put this issue on the ballot before. I've had the honor of talking to some of the founders of our city over the years, and they have said to me that they could never have seen, foreseen what Beaver Creek has become. In fact, I think most people aren't aware of the fact that Beaver Creek is one of the top 25 cities in the state of Ohio. It's amazing to consider that we've had all of this success while only relying on grants that our amazing staff have been able to find, and property taxes from residents, even though the non-residents who come to Beaver Creek each and every day to work, that number has grown and grown, and they don't share in those costs. When I was fortunate enough to be part of City Council, the hardest moments were the ones when my fellow citizens would come to council regarding flooding issues, road problems, all kinds of things that we couldn't help them with, because we just didn't have the resources, and the needs were so overwhelming. So I'm pleased that the money from this measure would go to addressing those really important issues. Over $200 million in infrastructure projects would be funded, including stormwater management, addressing those unbelievable flood issues in the older parts of the city, and paving roads. I remember oftentimes, we only had enough money to pave five road miles, when we had 20 road miles that needed to be paved. And then citizens would complain about the quality of our roads, and it really wasn't because we didn't hear them, it's because we couldn't afford it. The reality is that we have real infrastructure needs in Beaver Creek, and costs have increased. And while Beaver Creek continues to be one of the most cost-effectively managed and fiscally conservative cities in Ohio, we can't cut our way or sacrifice our way to addressing these issues. What I value the most about this measure, though, is that it would reduce the tax burden placed on residents, and especially our senior residents. This makes sure that everyone who uses our city services shares the burden with everybody else. The data shows that about 23,000 people work in the city of Beaver Creek but live elsewhere. About 16,000 people live in the city of Beaver Creek but work in other cities with income taxes. As an example, I worked at Dayton Children's for 25 years in the city of Dayton and paid 2.5% income tax for the city services I used. My husband still works in Dayton and pays that rate. It's only fair that those who use the services share in the cost. And there are about 3,000 people, like Councilmember Bales and myself, who now both live and work in the city of Beaver Creek, so 3,000 of us. And for the past eight years, I've been doing that, living and working in Beaver Creek, and I have two businesses located in the city of Beaver Creek. I'm gonna pay more, but I still support this issue, because I believe in investing in what the city has become and what it needs to become. No one wants to pay more taxes, and certainly I don't either, but I have taken the time to understand and read the proposal. I understand the need, and I'm willing to understand that things cost more. I'm willing to invest in my city to ensure that the services are the best, the roads are well-maintained, and we can address the much-needed needs of our residents. I just want to make sure that everyone else, like me, who works here and uses city services, pays their fair share as well. So I will be voting yes on this issue, and I just hope my fellow citizens will look past the headlines and the misinformation and learn about this important proposal. Please weigh the facts about why it's needed, what it can do, and how it will work. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. All right, who else would like to address council? Please come on up. Give us a name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Wilson, 442 Zimmer Drive, Fairborn. I'm a former member of the Fairborn City Schools Board of Education, and also serve on the Steering Committee of the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding. And tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the Expanded Ed Choice voucher program and the impact that that has on local schools and property taxes. There was a three-year process with a group of legislators and superintendents and school treasurers to develop a fair school funding program. This is in well overdue response to the 25-year ago decision of the Deroff case of being overly reliant on property taxes in the school funding realm. This measure passed the Ohio House nearly unanimously. There were less than 10 dissenting votes on this. It went into the Senate in the budget reconciliation process. The version that passed the House also had a six-year phase-in, because it was a lot of money. So they said, we can't do it all at once and do a six-year phase-in program, so three of the two-year budget cycles. The Senate decided not to fund the program. Instead, they increased the eligibility for vouchers and increased the funding for vouchers to $5,500 for K through 8 students and $7,500 for students in grades 9 through 12, an increase of $1,500 per student, while public schools received $90 per student over the two-year budget program. Apparently, the General Assembly does not consider your students to be worth as much as the voucher students, since Beaver Creek only receives $2,866 per student, leaving local property tax owners the burden of picking up the balance of cost of educating your students. If your schools were funded at the same level as the voucher students, Beaver Creek schools would receive an additional $26.2 million per year. This is the sixth highest in the state and the highest in the Dayton region. Why are voucher students receiving greater funding than your students? That'd be a good question to ask Senator Hackett. One of the big impacts of the Expanded Voucher is that rather than the previous method where they deducted money from the local schools, they're funding the money directly to the voucher students out of a giant pool of education money. Now, Article 6, which is the education article in the Ohio Constitution, Section 2, states, "But no religious or other sect or sects shall ever have any exclusive right to or control of any part of the school funds of this state." And the voucher schools aren't subject to the same regulations and things of the public schools in that they can discriminate. They can choose to accept schools, students based on learning ability, physical abilities, religious preferences, any number of things that they can discriminate against. So for additional information, you can go to the website vouchershurtohio.com, and I thank you for allowing me to address the council.
Thank you. Very interesting information. Who else would like to address council tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Donna Wilson, Fairborn, Ohio, 442 Zimmer Drive. I'm a former city councilwoman in Fairborn and a former teacher, a retired teacher, I should say. All right, so I would like to tell you how vouchers affect municipalities. When vouchers extract money from the funds for public schools, the school district must ask residents to pass levies to provide increases in property taxes to make up for the loss. Ohio residents are responsible for 72.5% of property taxes, with businesses being responsible for the other 27.5%. Citizens get weary of the many tax increases, and I know that you are all very aware of this, and in some cases, refuse to pass new levies. This is one of the big factors that families consider when making a change in housing. Another reason, inflationary rises for other needed services such as fire and police protection, as you spoke about a while ago, infrastructure updates like sewer, water maintenance, and roads, and may require more money, and more levies may be issued. Schools still have the same costs for providing staff, maintaining buildings, and providing transportation. They must also transport students to private schools, adding a significant amount of money to provide that service as additional buses and drivers may be needed, and you've talked about needing drivers for Beaver Creek. Vouchers often promote segregation and discrimination against students of color, those of a different religion, and those with disabilities, as private schools can choose which students they admit. The extraction of money from the school district may reduce the extracurricular activities offered by the school, and also require a student to pay a significant amount to engage in those activities. This may prohibit many students who would gain skills and knowledge not taught in the regular curriculum. These activities often develop personal and professional skills that truly make a difference in a student's life, for example, the music program, the sports program, and many, many others. Your school district pays $12,694, which is slightly below the statewide average of $13,386 for each student that they educate. The state allocates a big $2,866 to that. The balance is made up by your local property taxes of $9,828. Our public school students have a right to the monies our citizens have paid for their thorough and efficient education through state sales tax and income taxes. I've often heard legislators make the statement, throwing money at an issue doesn't solve the problem, especially when it comes to school funding. If not, why are they so fast to take it away from the public schools and throw it at choice families? And the best thing that we can do is to contact our legislators in the Senate. The House did pass it, like Andy said, almost unanimously. Let contact Senator Hackett. Let him know that this is not acceptable to our school system. And also, for more information, you can go to vouchershurtohio.com. And I do have, Andy and I have gone to other city councils, you're not the only one, and we have a draft of a letter for city councils and school boards that we are asking you to please consider sending a copy of this. I will give it to you.
Clerk here, Whitney.
And if any or all of you would like to sign this, I think that you will, when you read it, that you would, I see a lot of nods when I've been doing this, and I think that you'd probably agree, and I think it's really bad for Beaver Creek with all the taxes and the struggles that we have in our cities of trying to meet all those needs. So thank you very much.
Thank you. If you can leave a copy with the clerk. Anyone else would like to address council tonight?
Carol Graff, 1442 DeVoe Drive. Just want to say, Vicki Jambrone explained it magnificently. I don't think there's anything to add to what she said, but the City Manager mentioned there are 1,800 jobs coming. Jobs coming to Beaver Creek does not mean diddle squat unless we have an earnings tax. Those people coming in for those 1,800 jobs will use more police, more fire, more streets, more everything, without paying their fair share unless we pass the earnings tax. The earnings tax will be the possible relief to the rest of us who've been paying our property taxes for decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address council?
My name is Dave Brown, and I live at 140 Shelford Way in Beaver Creek. And I've been a resident of Beaver Creek since we became a city in 1980, and I'm Treasurer of TaxBusters PAC. I'll be presenting some information about the proposed 1% city income tax that will be on the May 3rd ballot. Fact's not given by the other side. First of all, it's being claimed that 8.1 mils of property tax is being terminated, when it is actually only half that, 4.1 mils. The 8.1 mils is the voted millage of those levies, and some of those levies were first voted on back in the early 80s, and that millage has dropped to its current 4.1 effective millage, which is the value actually used in calculating how much we pay on our property taxes. This is the beneficial effect of levies. This 4.1 mil reduction only amounts to 5% of our total property taxes, and is only 1 mil more than was being reduced on the failed income tax attempt in 2020. A fact that hasn't been publicized is that wage earners of any age could have to pay this income tax. So if a 10-year-old Beaver Creek resident has a lemonade stand, or is in 4H and sells a steer at the fair, she could have to pay the income tax. Or if a Beaver Creek High School student works at Kroger's, the mall, Deos Landscaping, or Mike's Car Wash, he would be subject to the income tax on earnings over $1,000 per year, and they don't even get to vote on the income tax. Centerville and Kettering don't do this. Another group that won't get to vote on this income tax are the non-resident workers. These non-residents, by the way, frequent our restaurants and businesses, and the companies they work for pay property taxes to Beaver Creek. If these non-resident workers use I-675 to get to work, that's maintained by the state, not the city, and 835 and 35 get license fees and gas taxes to help with their maintenance. Non-resident workers make up a large part of the traffic in Beaver Creek and a significant number of the EMS and police runs, probably more so than non-resident workers. A big problem with the income tax is the lack of accountability. A majority of just four councilmembers can decide how the income tax is spent, and the citizens will lose their ability to make that decision over our own hard-earned tax dollars. Levies are for a specific purpose and amount. What's more democratic than getting to decide on levies at the ballot box? Where else are we able to actually directly decide how our tax dollars are spent? Though I'm a retiree from the base and won't be paying the income tax, and will get the slight property tax reduction, and other members of TaxBusters are retired also, I still don't want to pass along my share of taxes onto my kids or other kids, my former coworkers, or young families, which could have several family members who have to pay this income tax. With levies, there is only one charge per household. Beaver Creek is unique and a desirable place to live because of levies. Don't let them dump an income tax into our creek. Early voting for the May 3rd election has started, so vote no on the income tax. TaxBusters is on Facebook at TaxBusters-BCK if you want to contact us.
All right. Thanks for your input. I will add one very quick comment, and that is, young people that you make the point have to pay, that is not our choice, that is the state. The state mandated that. You referenced cities that don't charge the youth. It's because they had their earnings tax in place before the state changed it. And, you know, anytime that you would like to debate one-on-one, and we've had this opportunity once before, you know, a lot of your information, in my mind, is not quite accurate. So that being said, is there anyone else that would like to address council?
My name is Alan Cummings. I live at 2669 Greenside Drive, Beaver Creek. I think for those of you sitting at the dais and those of you who are looking in and who will view this video of the council meeting, I think you're seeing what others have said today about the fallacious information and the misinformation that's being placed there. So... So, I urge you to watch that and call the city to verify the incorrectness of this information. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was incorrect?
All right. Who else would like to address council? Please come forward.
My name is Carlton Francis. I live at 133 Patriot Way. I thought I'd never say this, I'm for the income tax, all right? I've been able, over the past couple of years, to learn more about city government, and I didn't realize how complicated it was. I was a federal executive with DOD, and I thought they had problems. I've seen the budgets, I've seen the 42, what is it now, 40 years of not being able to meet the requirements to keep the infrastructure up and to maintain us as a competitive city. I hear TaxBusters, that's great, you don't want to pay taxes, fine. But, levies aren't going to do it. Levies and property taxes are just going to force people to move out, and we're going to watch our streets crumble, we're going to watch our parks deteriorate, and we're going to watch our police department unable to meet staffing standards. That bothers me. This is my home, I live here. If I've got a leaky roof at the house, I fix it. I would do the same with my community. I think I have more influence over here than I do at the federal level with regard to taxes. You were voted in, you're trusted agents, so I don't understand why people suddenly don't trust. The books are open. I've never seen a city that puts everything out there online, and I feel sorry for you when you got to answer questions about a $9,000 hot water heater, which is really a boiler, it's another issue. But, that aside, I support it. I want to maintain the city, I want to maintain my home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else tonight that would like to address council? Seeing none, we will close that section on the agenda. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.